Morning. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Then I need Board Action to elect our Chair and Vice Chair. Like to take on the Vice Chair first, if we could. Any motions to nominate a Vice Chair?
Madam Chair, I present Commissioner Gibbon for Vice Chair.
Second that.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, we call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Gibbon.
I'm not giving him a choice.
You know what? Before we totally vote, I should ask for public input because that's my deal now.
You want me to stop here?
Yeah, just a second. Anybody public input on this so we can reconsider? Okay, let's go ahead then with the rest of the roll call.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. And then Board Action to elect a Chair. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I think at this time, we are engaged in our building process. We have many issues going on. So I would offer our current Chair one more year. Chairman Landine.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any public input on that agenda item? Good morning.
Hi. Betty Otten, 46787270, Third Street, NT. Yes!
Thanks, Betty.
Thank you, Betty.
All right. No further discussion. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Then we are going to move on to our consent agenda. Consider a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Aaron's. Any discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Move on to regular business. We've got discussion and Board Action regarding the creation of an ambulance district. Who's going to tee that up for us?
I'll go ahead and address that, Madam Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
First of all, as you realize, Adam Van den Plaats, the City Administrator for Lennox, has been here approximately the last eighteen months occasionally about a concern of creating an ambulance district. I know that there is a concern in the western part of Lincoln County and the eastern part of Turner County that we need this service. I know that, as you can see in our agenda packet, it lists particular townships that are involved that really would benefit from this. And I think at this particular time, I know that we're in the preliminary stages right now. And I know that, like anything else, when you do a creation of something new of this nature, we have to make sure we dot the i's and cross the t's and so forth to make this workable. I guess at this particular time, I know in visiting with Nate yesterday, he said that he wouldn't be able to be here today, but he does have representatives that I know that can answer more questions here in regard to it. Nate did mention that what he's looking for is for the Lincoln County Commission to pass a resolution to place a question on the ballot. And particularly, he would leave that up to the two auditors of Turner County and Lincoln County to figure out when that should take place. But he was very encouraged that perhaps this could take place either during a primary or a general election. He said at this particular time, the municipalities of Chancellor, Worthing, and Lennox have all endorsed this resolution and have passed it. And Turner County, our colleagues to the west, the Commission has done so as well. So he's asking for the approval of Lincoln County to do the same. And I guess at this particular time, I agree that I think maybe this is something that we do need to look into to make sure we meet the needs and services of those. Right now, the Lennox Area Foundation or the Lennox Area Ambulance, I know is running at a deficit each year as far as financial obligations. So I think this is something that needs to be looked at carefully. So I guess if there's any other questions, I do know that Ellen Perry is here and so forth to answer questions in regard to it. So maybe if you would like a motion at this time, or if you would like to hear from Mr. Perry to answer any questions. I know Commissioner Aaron's, the last time that Mr. Van den Plaats was here, had some questions for him. And maybe you've had your questions answered. I didn't know if you had or not. So anyway.
I'm looking to see if we have an actual resolution in front of us. And it doesn't look like we do in our share file.
There's a resolution drafted in the briefing form?
It is in the briefing form. Okay, let me pull that up. Okay. So I guess my first question is whether this has been petitioned by the residents, if that's been sought to put this on the ballot. Because it seems to me from the statutes themselves that that is the primary way of creating an ambulance district, because that's mostly what the statute addresses. Do you have any comments about that, whether petitions have been circulated?
My name's Ellen Perry. I'm the Director of the Ambulance in Lennox. We have not gone the petition route because in the state law, it does lay out both resolution and petition, both. And we have gotten the resolutions passed by the three other municipalities and also Turner County as well. So that is the reason we took that route. In the end, either way, the citizens have to vote to make this come to be. So the end result is still the same either way.
Ellen, you know, last time you were here and Nate was here, thanks for showing up and answering some hard questions. Couple of questions I had at the time were about cost recovery. You guys are running a deficit. But at the time, at least a couple of months ago when you showed up, there was no mechanism in place where you were, you know, pursuing small claims actions against people, it's the states or anything like that, in order to close the gap and try to recover those costs which people legally owe to the ambulance service. Has that been fixed in the meantime here?
Yes. We have talked, we actually, as of January 1st, 2022, we switched to a new billing company that does our billing for the ambulance service. Part of their process is once claims get to 120 days, past insurance clearance and everything like that, they go to a collections process. Part of their collection process with the company they use is taking things to small claims court. So that is in the policy and is going forward.
Okay, so that is in the policy now?
Yes.
Okay, good. And then the second thing is, I still go back to, I was at the public meeting, so were you, that was held, I think, earlier this last summer. And at the meeting, there was obviously a lot of skeptical people. And there was a lot of concern. I mean, one of the things that I thought was so interesting is there were a lot of rural citizens who were still skeptical of the program. And one of the people stood up and testified, or not testified, but basically what he said was, is why are you asking for 50 cents when you don't need all that money? Instead, why don't you ask for a smaller amount of money in order to meet the need that you have instead of creating like a surplus? So I don't know what that number is of what you need. You know, is it 25 cents? Is it 35? Nate said at the last meeting it wasn't 50.
If you look in the handout that Nate sent with, in there, to cover approximately what our losses are now, it'd be 22 cents.
So are you guys agreeing to dial down the request to 22 cents then?
That is not a decision we make. That's a decision that the board that is elected that represents the tax district makes.
Well, if I understand correctly, isn't that the dollar amount is put on the resolution to be voted on by the public? So that is a decision that this board would have to make. And what I'm saying is, would you agree that you should only collect the amount of money you need as opposed to the maximum amount?
We are not requesting the maximum amount at all. The maximum amount is $1.10. 60 cents per thousand for operating, 50 cents for capital improvements, which would include trucks and building both. We were not looking for $1.10.
So you'd be happy with 22 cents then?
22 cents would cover losses as of today.
Okay.
But that does not cover for increased staffing needs. As the call volume goes up, that does not include replacement of trucks. That does not include, you know, expansion of a building. That as our call volume goes up, we have to build a bigger building. There's just no way about it.
And since you guys are being very diligent about the taxpayer money, have you produced a handout that shows the voters what you anticipate that mill levy rate should be each year based upon your anticipated costs? So right now, it should be 22. And then next year, it should be what? And then the year after that, it should be what?
We do have a proposed budget going forward, yes. Tax mill levy, not exactly to those, to the actual percentage, yes. But no.
So I think you're almost there, but you're not quite there far enough for me. Because the people that sat in that room were pretty adamant that it not be at that 50 cents. So I think you're almost there. I think when there is a commitment to saying, look, we'll agree to this dollar amount and we will constrain ourselves to that. And I get the reason why you don't want to do that. You want that full 50 cents because you don't want to have to keep going back to the voters to vote on a new tax increase every year. But fact of the matter is that people should be in charge, not the bureaucrats or some board that gets elected when it comes to tax increases. So I think you're almost there, but you're not quite close enough for me. But I do appreciate all the work you've done so far.
Any other comments or questions?
Question. You arrived at, you said your basic needs were 22 cents and you're at 50, which Commissioner, have you, when you looked at the 50 cent level, what were you looking at? How far in the future? What were you looking to replace? What were the needs that put that level on the paper?
With the 50 cents, we figure we bring in about $250,000 a year, which would make up a deficit of what we're losing now, but also for increased staffing needs. Our call volume is going up exponentially every year and it's continued so because of population growth within to our territory. And so we know we're going to have to start staffing 24 hours, seven days a week. That's just how it's going to have to be. Right now, it's done by volunteer labor a lot. But volunteerism is dying, number one. And number two, I'm not sure why the model was ever introduced, that we have life-saving skills being performed by volunteers. There's value to that. And so we have put value to that. Also, we know we're going to have to increase and grow in both truck size and building size. So that money is figured into that as well. But that $250,000 with what we're bringing in in insurance revenues would cover the budget we're proposing.
Your deficit each year, approximately, what is that?
Right now, with probably about 60% volunteer labor, we're looking at anywhere from $30,000 to $70,000 a year, depending on what insurance brings in. That all depends on what kind of calls we run, what kind of insurance there is.
As far as the deficit right now. And visiting with Mr. Van den Plaats, I know he said that he thought 22 cents would probably do so. But he said, at the same time, if we do pass a resolution and the question is approved on the ballot, you would be electing a board and they perhaps could change the dollar amount per thousand. Is that correct?
That's our understanding of it, yes.
And is that your main concern, Commissioner Aaron's, at this time?
My main concern is I think the request is out of touch with where the majority of the people are. The concerns that I am giving voice to are not just my own. They're from the people that were at the meeting. And they're basically, the message was, why are you asking for so much money if you don't need it right away? And Nate came here and testified that, you know, he said that, yeah, they would have to do another election if they want more money in the future. And I get it. Nobody wants to have to go to the voters and ask for tax money. But if it's a logical request and if it meets the needs, the public will support it. So I don't think you need to ask for half hog right out of the gate. I think you need to ask for what your immediate needs are here in the future. And then if those costs increased in the near future, you can always go back to the voters and ask for more.
I'm on board pretty much with what Commissioner Aaron's is saying. Number one, I don't think this resolution is specific enough in that it's not limited to dollar amount. And I'm hesitant because I don't want the public to think that we are supporting the establishment as a board of the ambulance district itself. So to me, it either needs to be focused and narrowed with some more specific amounts for further discussion, or you actually need to go and petition the members of your district to put this on the ballot. Those are my two cents on that.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I want to applaud those individuals that have been trying to take this endeavor on because it's not, of course, anytime you're talking about taxes, it's not a pleasant thing to do. Having the exposure as my, one of my kids, and hopefully one of my other ones might be joining you as an EMT, and seeing, you know, firsthand with their conversations of how they've had, you know, respond to things and the short staff and all of that that you're exposed to, I think this is something that you have to do. The topics that they've talked about are very valid and they need to get addressed because people are concerned about having restrictions as Commissioner Aaron's. Yes, it's 110. You could do 50 cents on paper right now. It looks like you're looking at a 22 cents to balance the budget. I think a little more detail, especially to us who is going to give this authority, to do it this way probably was needed to say, yeah, we need to have some controls in this. And the other part, you had mentioned that the communities of Lennox and Chancellor and Worthing had gone on board. I did not hear any conversation from the townships, rural areas that will be addressed. Had any of those, you know, elected officials been addressed as to, you know, they're on board with it? Because one of the things that I would like to see is a chart as to how this is good funding, how much is coming from the cities, how much is coming from the rural and going into the general fund for this project. Because point blank, you need to do it. It just needs to be very surface so everyone can understand where it is, where it's coming from. And then my final point is, coming back to the map, is there an out or an adjustment that residents can make to being in or out of the district?
There is within the state law a way for a region to take themselves out. They would petition the elected board and that elected board would vote to remove them from the district. So there is a way within the law to do that.
But it'd be strictly up to the governing board, which I would, on the surface, question why they would want to let somebody out. So I would think that there needs to be another mechanism. Because we're looking at, and I don't know if, like the communities of Harrisburg or T, wherever, question to see if they had interest in getting in. But I do-
Did contact the administrators of both of those towns.
And they didn't.
And they were not at that time looking.
Okay. So and then we're within, I believe, a half mile or less of community, at least of T. You know, I look at Perry 1, they're a mile from a station paramedics ambulance from the cities who falls. I just question where those individuals would want to be. And I would like to have some mechanism for the X amount of area to try to petition to be in or out. So both ways. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Poppins, I, just to answer your question as well, I did speak to the folks in Harrisburg as well as some of the residents who live in Spring Creek. And they said they weren't looking at this time either. Just to answer your question.
Very good.
In regard to that.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
You know, I think that you bring a valid point, that there's no question that this is a necessary step. You need this. You need to be able to do this. This is a life and death matter. I mean, if you watched a sports game here a week ago, you saw what emergency vehicles and emergencies like this occur. And with the growing population, we need this. Now, we've got some issues here as to taxing authority, voting on it, and how much we're going to levy for the tax. So I think that you've made your point as far as having an ambulance district. Now, the tough part is to work out, what is a fair price to start? Where is it? Commissioner Aaron's likes the 22 cents. You have the 50 cents. Surely, there's somewhere in between that can address your shortfall and address some of your most immediate needs that fall somewhere in between those two. That's palatable to those taxpayers. Because when, you know, everybody says they don't want to pay a tax, but yet, it's just like anything else. You don't want a lawyer until you need one. I just thought I'd throw that in there since we have to. Anyway, you understand what I'm saying?
I get that.
So if you can balance this out, and to put that to a vote, actually, is, I don't know, you can have the Commission do that. And then the Commission is in favor, but I'm ambivalent on either side. But I do think you should come back with a meaningful number that addresses your needs, but also addresses some of these shortfalls that you are going to have. You know, if you're running from $30,000 to $70,000 short, we can't expect volunteers to continue to pick up the burden. And you make a good point about having volunteers having life-saving capabilities. If you have your building size, your truck size, 24/7, all of those can be factored in. So I would encourage you to come back to us with a more reasonable number that addresses some of those and how that addresses that. That's my take.
Do you have any questions for us right now?
I don't believe so at the moment.
Okay. I think we're just looking at something more specific in dollar amount.
Ellen, how soon can you get some of this information and get back to us?
We could probably get back to you by the next meeting if you'd like to.
Good. Because I do believe this is a concern that, you know, you don't need the service till you need it and then you want it. And obviously, I'd like to see this move forward because there are people in that part of the county who obviously do need the service. And we don't expect you to keep operating like you have been.
And we, you know, we're happy to and we continue servicing them. The citizens of Lennox are the ones paying for it, though. And it's from 2015, we were at 62% of the calls were in the city limits of Lennox. As of 2022, the end numbers, 48%, are now within the city limits of Lennox. So the growth is happening, call volume growth is happening outside, but the citizens of Lennox are still paying for it.
And your area is approximately 45 square miles?
189 square miles.
100 and what?
89.
189.
A graph of that or a map showing pinpoints of where the calls are?
I can't do that because that's going to be infringing on HIPAA violation.
Where calls are?
I can tell you how many calls-
Even though it's not specifying who it is?
I can tell you how many calls within each jurisdiction, each township, each city. I have all that documentation.
Okay.
But yeah, I can't tell you, I can't put pinpoints on a map.
Interesting.
That's going to be really close to some HIPAA violations.
I find that interesting. Because I'm curious if a lot of it is the interstate.
And I can pull those numbers out for you too.
I think it would be beneficial, so.
Madam Chair, Ellen, I think you're getting closer. I think showing this level of detail is what, when you ask people for money, this is the kind of level of excruciating detail you need to get into. And I think you're getting there. And I'm glad to see that you're willing to undertake the effort to do it. And, you know, you guys have a really good point when you talk about the fact that Lennox city residents are subsidizing the service for those folks who live out in the country. And, you know, that was very evident in the meeting that I went to, and I think Commissioner Gibbon was there, Commissioner Schmidt was there. They know what I'm talking about. There's a subsidy going from folks who live in town to the folks who live in the country. On the other hand, folks who live out in the country are very worried about the fact that ag land is going to be taxed the same. You know, there is no ag property exemption or abatement, if you will. It's a straight-up tax. And my guess is they missed that when they wrote the state law. Now, whether that gets fixed this year in state law or not, I don't know.
Yep.
I'd be interested in seeing that. And I'd like to know if you guys are tracking on that, or you know anything about what's going to happen with that?
We do know it's going to be coming up in the legislature this year. We are watching it. At this point, we don't know what's going to happen with it, obviously.
Yeah. And so obviously, if that changes, that may ease some of the concerns of the folks out in rural country. Because when you own a lot of land, a lot of acres, and you're paying that 50 cents, that's a pretty penny to pay.
Is there any, I guess, thought to table this item and bring it back for further discussion next meeting?
I think they can bring it up at any point when they feel, if they want to address some of the issues they can readdress. Bill, I think, wants to comment on that. The one thing that I want to stress too is, for me, I'm looking for individual, you know, areas that, especially if they haven't been addressed through their township leaders, some of the rural areas need to have a mechanism to come out besides petitioning to the governing board, which, if there's one governing board, there's no incentive for them to hear, for somebody to leave.
Mr. Golden, did you want to say something?
I just want to address the procedure with you.
Yep.
So currently, Turner County has went ahead and voted to advance this. So there's two options here. They can do it by petition and go on the ballot. Or they can come to the two county commissions that this district would be in. If you approve that, it would go to another meeting, which would be a joint meeting between the two counties, which would then be public and the public can come in and address the issue. What goes on the ballot is whether or not the district is created. And that is the sole question that goes to the voters. Once that district is formed, it's like a road district or any other district we have, that board has control of what they set the tax levy at. And so there would be no restrictions when it comes to the balloting process. Once it's formed, that's the entity that then has the taxing authority. So that would be the process and how we get to an ambulance district, and that would be their authority.
So if we voted yes on this resolution, it's not setting any amount at this time, and then we would have a joint meeting?
The sole vote that you have is whether or not you bypass the petition process to go to a joint meeting with Turner County, where there would be a public meeting at that point. And then at that point, the auditor would sit in an election in that area, and it would just create the district, and that would be it.
But once that district is created, isn't that kind of a slippery slope to the next steps?
It is just like any other, like if you form a road district, the road district sets what the fees are going to be. If you set an ambulance district, the ambulance district is going to set those fees.
Yeah. So once the Commission opens the door, anybody and everything can walk through it. So if we don't squeeze out in the public discussion some of these concessions, if you will, we got no control. We're just voting yea or nay. And then the people who are in that ambulance district can do whatever they want.
They would control the dollar amount then, correct, then?
Right.
That board?
Yeah.
That board. I'm, again, reverting back to my concern of who gets to determine the map. So can you answer who gets to determine the map?
Well, what either comes in front of the voters by petition is the district and what they're setting it as. Or what they're doing is they're asking you to set the map because they're asking you to approve what they're saying is going to be the ambulance district, go to a joint meeting with Turner County, have a public meeting, and then set that for an election on that map. But the board would control after that for who comes and goes within the district, would be the ambulance board.
So the sole issue would just be the creation of the district itself on the ballot?
Yes. So to Mr. Aaron's point, I mean, the concessions and things and hammering out those points would, may be a common agreement here, but it would be more along the lines of a gentleman's agreement and the pressure to keep that agreement versus what would be legally binding on the board once it's created.
Yeah. And I think, I don't think anybody's talking about the legalistic point of view here. I think they're talking about, you know, public servants stepping up, telling people what they'll commit to publicly and then sticking to their word. Because one of the issues we haven't discussed yet, but I'll bring up now, is I asked Nate Vanderplats at the last meeting, are people elected at large or are they elected from districts? And is it possible that, you know, is it a five-membered board? Is it a three-membered board? Could all five members- Could all five members end up coming from the same neighborhood in Lennox? And then there's no representation from the rural areas? And then they end up giving obscene tax increase to farmers? You know, I'm not saying that'll happen, but those are all the possibilities. And that's why, because we don't control the taxation amount, that makes this vote even more important about whether we open the door or not. And it's just none of those details have been released to us yet. I'm hopeful that they will, they'll get there, and then we'll have more details. And frankly, if I were them, I would want to get all this stuff ironed out ahead of time, too. But the concern I have is it's not. It's not being ironed out, and there's no public discussion. So that's why them coming to this commission has been helpful, and I appreciate what they've done so far.
I would concur with that. And if you don't want to bring us those kinds of details, that's totally understandable, then I think you should go your petition route going forward.
Madam Chair, I would offer a motion to table this for two weeks until our, for final meeting of the month. Hopefully, that gives them enough time to come up with some additional information and address some of the concerns, Madam Chair.
That makes sense, Alan?
Can I address his question real quick?
Ah, you sure can.
Um, your question about the, the board, it's at least five members. They're voted, they're elected to alternating, three of them would be a two-year term, the other two would be a one-year, switching over to a two-year term, so you've got an alternating board. So it's not everybody's being reelected at the same time. And my full intentions would be to have one from rural Turner, one from rural Lennox, or rural Lincoln Counties, and then one from the three towns involved, Worthing, Chancellor, and Lennox. So that there is representation across the whole territory.
Thank you for answering that.
Thank you. Any public input on this agenda item?
Good morning.
Good morning. Betty Otten, 46787273rd Street, T. I was also at that public meeting. And that's our biggest concern, is that the board, no matter what you guys decide up here, no matter what these guys decide should be, whether it's 22 cents or the hundred, or the $1.50 or whatever it was, whatever they decide doesn't matter. It's, it comes back down to the, whatever the board decides. And they can say that they want these districts spread out, but it's the board that makes those decisions of who gets to be elected and who represents it. And that's the biggest question at all, is the board itself has all the control. Not these guys and not you guys. And so my question is, and what came out of that meeting, that public meeting, too? Have they looked at having a private ambulance company come in and service that area? That's another question that needs to be answered. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else in the public want to come up and make comment? All right, if not, I had a motion to table by Commissioner Aaron's, I believe.
Poppins.
I'll second that.
And then a second by Commissioner Aaron's. Any further discussion?
The motion is to table until the 124 meeting?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Item two on our agenda, I'm actually going to ask for a motion to table that. I want to have discussions in executive session about that contract.
So move on your request to table.
Second.
Thank you. So I'll just, we'll move that to our other executive sessions at the end. That'll work for everybody.
Yes.
All right. So then we'll move on to item three on our agenda.
You want to comment?
Go ahead.
Comment?
Yep, any comment on that right now? All right.
And then we'll vote. Your, your motion was to.
Yeah, we can vote.
Yeah, Sean's looking at you.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. All right, now we'll move on to item three on our agenda. Commissioner salaries.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Humphrey's not here, we'll move on to the next one. We've got board action to reappoint Eric Scott for a second four-year term.
Madam Chair, move to approve.
I'll second that motion.
All right, public input on that?
Good morning, Commissioner Chatfield, 820 North Dakota Street. Simply a question, maybe more procedural. I didn't see in any way or anywhere the opportunity for anyone else to apply for that position, to see if they wanted to, if there's more interest out there. I understand that the term is up. I understand he's eligible for another term. My only question is, is that should there be an opportunity given? If there is, I'm not saying there is, but if there is someone else out there who is perhaps interested in that, should the commission go that route? So hopefully, just opens up for a little discussion. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. You know, and I don't know the answer to that question specifically with looking at the bylaws and historically what's been done. Commissioner Poppins, do you have any comment on that?
I have, my recollection in recent history, unless someone has relinquished their position, they've almost automatically received their second term. It has been more of a burden to, to find somebody to serve. Procedural, I don't, it isn't necessary, absolutely has to be that way. But in my recollection, there is not a single time where the opportunity to reappoint has not been followed.
Madam Chair, Eric Scott's been a good commissioner, and I don't even agree with him on every single issue, but he's agreeable to disagree with. And, but he also brings up a number of good points, especially in terms of strategic planning that needs to happen. And he and I agree on a number of those larger issues. But regardless, I support his renomination.
All right, any further discussion?
I think that since we have a lobbyist working with, with Canton, which would be Commissioner Scott, that we should have full record of who he works with, trade groups, farm groups, everything. So it's publicly disclosed, because he almost works as a lobbyist. And then he's working for the county. And so then basically, we have a large position for a very small percentile of the county that is representing at-large. And the second thing is, his last time this was done, Marlene Sweater, who was the auditor, put out a public article in the papers asking for applications. I think the process should be followed. Thank you.
So I've got a motion and a second right now. I don't know, is there any appetite here on this board to open that up for application?
I just seem to recall, Madam Chair, that when it comes to the commissioner districts, the commissioners have the discretion to nominate who they want when the position comes open. And it's up to that commissioner whether they want to publicly advertise or not using the county resources. This one is an at-large position, so I understand no one commissioner is responsible for appointing it. I understand Commissioner, or Mr. Ventura's concerns. And I'm sure Mr. Scott would be more than willing to talk about all those issues if any member of the public wanted to ask him to disclose those things. But I think for now, we should just move forward and get him appointed.
Any other discussion amongst the commission?
I think, Madam Chair, I think Tony brings up a valid point to make sure that, since this is the sole at-large area and its sole jurisdiction is animal production. If there is, when the original intent was to put that in, was to have someone actively engaged in the production of livestock. You had confinement, you had issues that you, that was your livelihood. If you have individuals that are engaged in agriculture and in a different vein in representing organizations, I do think that having that individual divulge, if there is lobbying, if there is other issues on there that may result in having to recuse himself from certain issues because of his employment representing those areas. So I would agree with, with Mr. Ventura. I'd like to see what, what those areas are for public disclosure and just find out, you know, not that I'm saying anything wrong with Eric Scott, he does a good job. I have no problem with him serving. But I would like to see any and all things that he has, represents, be up for our information and to the public.
Madam Chair, if I may, Commissioner Schmidt, if I could just clarify then. That's not personally directed at Mr. Scott, I presume. It's, that would apply to all members of the Planning Commission. And maybe what we should do as a policy, and we can, you know, table this for a week or two or whatever, is just have the members of the Planning Commission fill out that same form that elected officials do with regard to where they receive income from, right? Do that, and then all the taxpayers and the citizens get more transparency, and then everybody knows. Because who knows? We've got employees of the city of Sioux Falls who serve on the Planning Commission. How do we know that they're not doing the bidding of the city, right? Well, who knows? But we just take everybody at their word that they're doing the best job they can. And so maybe we just have everybody fill out that disclosure form that elected officials do.
I would concur, because I think we live in an age where there's, everybody is on the microscope looking at that. So it wouldn't hurt that all people that are making these kind of decisions are that even we appoint have to go through the same scrutiny. I would support that.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
There is a huge significant difference between someone that is appointed to a position. Because it's not, not planning and zoning board, there could be numerous other activities that we appoint individuals. So not to disagree with the principle of what you're asking, I think that our, but to say that we have to have them do it, fill out the form, unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to support it. There is, there is a huge distinction in my mind from somebody that is elected, runs for an office, versus someone that is appointed. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Is, am I correct, this was created in 2019? Was this the first time that it was created? This position at-large actively involved in livestock?
I'd have to ask Toby for clarification.
I think it's been longer than that. I might be wrong, but I.
Yeah, I kid.
I don't think it's been since I've been on the board. So. All right, so I do have a motion, and I do have a second. So I'm going to close the floor and call the question.
Okay, what, what is the question right now, ma'am? Madam Chair?
To appoint Eric Scott for a second four-year term. If there are concerns about the bylaws and disclosures and that sort of thing, I just think that that either needs to be in the bylaws and that's not before us today. Although I appreciate the comments, it's not before us today. So if there's no further discussion, I'd like to call the question.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. All right, Bill, did you get ahold of Tracy? All right, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. We've got item five, we've got Terry. Good morning, Terry.
Good morning. Good morning. I am looking for board approval and authorize chair to execute an agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for a detour route on County Road 152. It's 294th Street. Let me bring this up.
That's a big one, right?
Yes. So this is their, this is the proposed, this is on the Highway 46 project. There'll be detouring traffic on ours, on our roads.
And when is that starting, Terry?
Twenty-four. So here, here is the, the plans for where they run a detour. So they're going to detour from the interstate to Highway 11 in 2024. And then in '25, they'll be going Highway 11 to Hudson will be the, will be the detour.
Then will our, will our project on that road be done in time to support that?
Yeah, our project is scheduled for this year, to happen this year. So far, we're still on pace on that. The agreement that you'll be signing, this has funding with it. And again, they have allocated, where is it, 1.8 million? A little over $1.8 million for the detour, which will be a part of our project in '23 here, so.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Terry?
I'd move for approval.
I'll second it.
I'm going to ask for public input first. Any public input on this item? All right, if not, now I'll take your motion.
Move for approval.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes, and then Terry, while you're there, we'll move on to item six, and we'll handle seven as well, since you're here.
Next item I have is approval to request for 2023 annual supply bids. Basically, it's concrete products, cutting edges, flex snowplows, blades, diesel and gas, mag water, hot mix, riprap, rock salt, and then weed chemicals and crushed concrete.
All right, you've heard the request, is there a motion?
Yeah, public.
Oh, public. Any public comment on this item? All right, if not, then I would hear a motion.
I would authorize to advertise.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Move on to item seven.
Next item I have is looking for approval and authorize the chair to execute a contract for 2023 bridge project, it's a replacement project. These are for two, two structures that we're having replaced this year. Basically, it's a contract that we need to have signed, so.
All right, thank you. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, I consider a motion.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we'll circle back to item three on our agenda. Tracy Humphrey?
Just need you all to review and approve the, formally approve your salaries. So by statute, we do that on the first commission meeting of the year. What's presented to you is the, what we had budgeted previously in 2022. It's in line with what the rest of the counties in our comparison are doing, which is the cost of living increase that we gave to the rest of employees. We also give to your position.
Tracy, what, what's the current salary?
I apologize, I don't think I have that actually in front of me at the moment.
Just wondering what we're at and what we're going to.
Oh, is that not attached on there? So I know what you're going to, so I can just do the math real quick to say what you would be going. So going to the $28,777.32. And that's a seven and a half percent increase from current, this current year, aligned with the cost of living that everyone else got.
Could you say that amount one more time?
Twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and 32 cents for the year.
Okay, and that's an increase of what percentage?
Seven and a half percent.
Thank you.
Any further discussion amongst the commissioners right now? Comments?
And the 7.5%, that's based on, where, where did we come up with that number at?
Yeah, so back in June, we had done a review, the compensation for everyone and realized they were about 15, or we were, had a discussion about that we were about 15% behind compared to everyone else with wages. So rather than doing the 15% at that time, they did the wage increase of the, a percentage at that time, which was our mid-year increase for everybody. And then we were doing the rest of it for the cost of living into this year.
My recollection is that the. My recollection is that the the difference was actually 17.5%. We did the 10% mid-year and then budgeted in the seven and a half percent. I totally would be supportive of dialing the seven and a half percent back to 5%. I don't know what the thoughts of the other commissioners are, but I'd like to hear them.
You took the words out of my mouth.
That would be more in alignment with what some of the other percentages were. And you are correct, it was the seventeen and a half that we were behind.
Any public input on this item? All right, if not, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, rather than a seven and a half percent, I would offer a 5% match. Cost of living plus anything else. But 5% seems to be across the board.
And that's your motion?
Yes.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, further discussion.
Madam Chair, I'd actually support giving we are getting a compensation back for mileage and and stuff, activities. I would actually support that we leave our salaries at our present with no increase. But that's my that would be my desire.
Okay, further, thank you. Further discussion from the other commissioners?
Madam Chair, I concur with Commissioner Poppins. I would just keep salaries at what they are for the commissioners.
Commissioner Gibbon, what are your thoughts?
And the salaries are what right now?
I want to say it's 25 ballpark.
What was that, ma'am?
Twenty about 25.
Twenty-five thousand.
Well, it's a very, Madam Chair, it's a very popular thing to say you want to freeze salaries, and I'm not opposed to that. But every year, you must you must realize that the cost of living goes up, attracting individuals into public service becomes a issue. I mean, no one runs for this office for the salary that you do. But for the past four years, I don't know that we've received any mileage compensation. We pay for most of everything that we have. While many our county receives a huge sum of money, they pay for everything out of that. But they have a huge sum of money to come back to. So you could you could play it both ways. One, you could say, well, we're going to stay and basically kept keep it at our present level, and we'll get paid for mileage, et cetera, and that's fine. We've done that. Or you could say that you want to set your salary at such a high, and then you, as an individual, pay for everything. You pay for your mileage, you pay for your meals, you pay for rooms if you attend conventions, et cetera, et cetera. So all in all, it comes out to how you just want to do business. And from my my point, I think it's a compensation, and it's up to the commissioners then to decide how they want to dispense their expenses. But that's just my opinion.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Schmidt, you're exactly right. Although in front of us, we have both, we are looking at a the seven and a half and receiving compensation back for mileage. I could support the 28 the seven and a half percent if we forego again or continue to forego the mileage that compensation that that we had had taken action to add. So one or the other, I think, should be removed, but thank you.
Well, I was offering you 25 or 5%.
Or 5%.
And I don't know what that amounted to. I don't know what that amounts to.
Well, right now, we have the motion on the table at the 5%, so I'll call the question on the 5%. And then we'll go from there.
I would like to add a offer a motion and to amend.
Let's just call the question on the 5%. And then we'll go from there. Sean, may I call the roll?
And the question is 5%?
5%.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Ehrens.
No.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, next agenda item. We are on number eight.
Yes.
Housing highway superintendent. Where'd he go?
He doesn't want to listen, does he?
All right, good morning. John Romble, building superintendent.
Okay.
So as we all know, we're out of room in this facility. So we're at that point, we need to get the highway superintendent and his secretary moved out to the highway shop or someplace outside so we can utilize that space. To start, I'd like to say that I'm still in favor with adding on to the building out there and like would like to move forward with trying to get some numbers for that. It's been estimated to me that that's about a $200,000 addition to that building. And I will tell you the reason that I believe this is the smart move for us is because whatever we do is going to cause a lot of congestion to what is admin space in the highway shop. Unfortunately, when it was built, there was not a lot of emphasis put in the admin space. My probably my largest concern is is the lack of restrooms. There is one major restroom, and that's set up for obviously the male, heavy male workers out there. And then you have one unisex bathroom. And now we're talking about moving the highway superintendent and his office assistant out there, and also talking about putting public out there for bid letting and whatnot. So it'll be a lot more public type space, and now we're going to be limited to a small unisex bathroom and then the one one large restroom that would basically houses all the needs for the the over the road guys. So this said, we we know that there is a small office space that's not being utilized. It's kind of listed as a conference room right now. It will potentially house the highway superintendent or an office, but it's very narrow and it's it will be congested. It will not fit what the highway superintendent currently has for space. The the admin assistant space kind of already exists out there. From talking to the way they currently utilize that space, that's where the foreman kind of sit down and do a lot of their computer work when they have time, so that we're kind of taking that away from them, or we're going to force them to to utilize a space that's currently for all of the other highway guys to do their time cards and that sort of thing. So I want to first say that I'd like to still move forward with at least architecturally looking at what it's going to take to add on to the building. I've worked with a couple different engineering companies. I think that 200 to 220 number is still probably feasible. I would like to keep in mind of using an architect from talking to planning and zoning. It would help immensely to have them do the plans and the specs to move this project forward than just utilizing engineering support and trying to just to pull the architectural idea out of it. I don't know what kind of savings we would have by doing that. But anyway, this said, I would like to keep that on the on the table. But we got to come up with a temporary solution.
Wouldn't, and maybe I'm wrong about this, wouldn't somebody like Reeves or Morton, I mean, couldn't they come out and look at that and see what it would take to attach on to that and do the architectural part of that?
So it's American Steel Building, American Buildings is who who supplied the steel for that building. I have not reached out to them, and maybe they could come up with that, but they they may or may not be able to give the architectural stamp. It's going to house people, so it has to have an architectural stamp.
Can you find out for us?
I could, yes, I could try to find out. I have talked to another engineering company that does the the foundation type work, and that's what they said they would need to have something more from the building side.
Okay. Commissioners, questions, comments?
I think our focus unfortunately has to be the temporary side. John, you'll continue to work on that and come back to us at a later date when you have more information. I don't think there's anybody correct me if I'm wrong, commissioners, that doesn't at least want to look at the potential for adding space out there. But our eminent problem or concern is to find the temporary. So, John, could you address?
I have numbers for some of that today.
Yeah, but can we hear that? And and let's try to see if we can move forward on that part of it. Thank you.
Right, because I would like to have that space freed up as soon as possible. So temporary options, as some of you know, we have discussed the idea of purchasing a governor type house from the T school district and moving it out here. Now, to do that, we would have to have some sort of foundation support underneath it. And I've I've so I've talked to schools, the T school district. They still have two buildings that they would be willing to sell us. $3,000 is their asking price. I talked to the building company that they've utilized in the past, and that company is saying about approximately $11,000 to get it to Canton. I've talked to one company as far as what it would take, depending on how long of a fix that would be, we'd either want to put a foundation on it or set it on 24-inch pillars, 12, 20. And that's what T does now. The pillar option would cost us about $5,000, and the foundation would cost us about, I think, $9,000. Talked to electrician, depending on where we put it. I guess if it were me, I think we should put it to the west. That would be about $3,800 in electrical just because of the distance to the next box for running power to it. And if we move it, if we could somehow plan it to the east or something and put it in close proximity to where all the power is at now, it'd be about $1,000. So the pros of this is it's it's more of a comfortable fix as far as a temporary fix goes. We could possibly reutilize that building as storage or something in the future if we move forward with the addition or something, I don't know. But we'd own that structure. And it would be a nice fit for what basically Terry truly is giving up right now, because he would could still have his meeting space in there. He could have his office space in there. He would not have a restroom in there in in my planning right now. The cons of this option would be it's not a quick fix, because probably the earliest I could get this building moved would be about five months from now. It's just most of the building companies already have a lot of projects, and they're with all the snow we have now, everything's just kind of on a standstill. So that's what they're telling me is it's probably about a five-month wait to get this building moved in. So to me, that's kind of a secondary, short-term fix. So a quick option would be to rent a mobile storage type job trailer, and we could probably get this fairly quickly within the month. That option would cost us about to rent it, it would cost us about $1,150 a month in rent. The delivery and pickup has to be paid upfront. That's about another $756, but it's one-time cost. I would recommend that we place this on the southwest side of the shop. And again, $1,000 to $2,000 to get power into it. Now, from talking to IT, because it's a metal container, it's outside the building, it adds some challenges and probably some expenses to get computer connections to it. It's wired to have computer connections, but to make that jump over there can be could be costly. I can't honestly talk numbers for that. But from talking to IT, that's what they're saying is that's could be challenging. And then, so the the pros of this is it's a lot more, it's a quicker option than the other option. It's at ground level. So whereas another negative thing to the governor's type house, I'd have to build decking around it, and I'd have to because I'd have to make it handicap accessible, and there'd be some cost to that. I didn't get those numbers. But we'd also have to shovel that space, and it would be some it'd be a little bit cumbersome that way. The the other cons, so the cons are there's really no return on investment. We're renting this space, we're giving it up whenever we're done with the other project. It's it's not as comfortable as the other option, and it would as far as we have had talk about putting something like this in the shop. And the problem with that is because of heated floors in the shop space, it would not be easy to keep this comfortable. It'd probably more likely get hot and probably absorb moisture, and it would be very noisy to have it in the shop. And many mobile many themselves said that they're not a very soundproof box. So that's kind of a a bad option for us. So then we move on to a third option. We talked about possibly removing and taking away some of the training slash break room space that the highway shop guys have. They currently have about a 26 by 27 room for for both their break room and their training. And if we move any office space in there, we would probably mean you'd be looking at that 12 by 13 type space. So we're taking right up front for one office, we'd be taking a quarter of that space. If we did two offices in there to potentially house a conference room or something, or a future office space, we'd be taking up half of their training space. I'm not quite sure if you could even utilize it at that point for training. I didn't really try to lay it out, but it would still meet their need as far as getting to a refrigerator and that to get to their their lunch items and whatnot. So it would be could still could be considered a break room, but probably not a training room anymore. So if we went to the option of utilizing the glass wall structures that we currently have in this building, the where we subdivided offices, we're looking at approximately $10,600 for one office. I didn't get the number to do a full length and do two offices, but I would assume it's probably which they'd share the one wall. So I'm guessing it'd be about $16,000. We could possibly build temporary wall space in there with with two by four construction. I've talked to planning and zoning. We, you know, obviously, we'd have to get probably a building permit, whatever, but it's probably pretty doable. This said, it 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 would be removable. We again, we'd probably end up wasting any materials with it, and I think ultimately it'd probably cost us about eight grand. So it'd be some cost savings, I think, upfront to do that.
Just for clarity, if I may.
Go ahead.
John, the glass walls, though, if those were temporary, we really wouldn't have much use for those either.
Well, so I.
Or would they?
Not not immediately, no, but I do believe it could be repurposed because they kind of come in a standard four-foot set by nine-foot section.
Okay.
And we could possibly reutilize those at some point. You know, there would be, you know, one, maybe two pieces that would be outside of that.
To repurpose it, or remove it, there'd be a cost, and put it back up, there'd be a cost.
Right, there would be, yes.
Is there a fourth option?
We talked, I guess, briefly about the making the temporary break room space and the.
Yeah, that turned out not to be an option.
And that's pretty much it. That's all I got for options at this point.
So, John, if we just run down the options.
Joel, is your microphone on?
Madam Chair, if I may. So, John, just to run down the options here. Number one, the 100% solution in your mind is to do, I guess, what I'll call a full buildout, and that's going to cost what?
Estimated $200,000, $220,000.
$220,000, so that's option number one. Option number two is to purchase the housing from the T school district.
Correct.
And that estimated cost is?
Total cost is $27,000.
And then option number three is to rent the mobile office space. And that was?
$1,100 a month.
Yeah, for just take that times the number of months that we would want to go.
Right.
And then $16,000 for the glass and $8,000 for the temporary walls.
Joel, Commissioner Ehrens, could I? We're we're still talking about two different things, and I would like us to focus on the temporary side, whether the schoolhouse or the full addition, I think, are more of a long-term play. Our the only immediate things that we have for option, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hanson, or Romble, sorry, John, too many Johns, is either the mobile office, glass walls, or the two by four construction. Those are the things that you're asking us to make a decision so we can move forward on one of those three options today?
Yes, I I think if there's immediate option, I'd like to start moving the receptionists out there right away and maybe create some sort of an office space, temporary office space for Terry to move out there right away. And I guess that would be a little bit depending on how strong the need is for that space to be absorbed right away. But I'm hearing it's needed yesterday.
Terry, I don't want to put you in the spot, but have you looked at these different options for temporary?
Yeah, I've discussed some of these with John, yes.
Is there one or another that makes more sense to you?
So if you're going to.
Um, so if you're going to split off the break room, are there a training room, where are you going to put them?
Yeah.
Right, and I've been out there and I've looked at those spaces with you, now you're getting all your documents are getting scanned in, so you, you don't have the storage issue, or do you?
A lot of ours have been. So a lot of the stuff we have now is the very large, you know, maps and um, planning documents from when roads were built. You know, a lot of them, they, they come on, they're big flats, about three foot by two foot. You know, so we'd have to have them scanned by somebody else, but but again, I, so I, we still have about, um, we have four file cabinets of those. And then we have probably three or so, four other file cabinets with other files in them that we keep on hand.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Terry, when we was out there, we just went through this contract with the, with the highway department. That room out there, if you take, that is heavily utilized as I'm understanding for all of the safety meetings that you have. The meetings that they utilize for themselves, for union purposes, they get to have those. So when we start carving down that room into an uncomfortable situation, what have we accomplished? I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but on the other hand, you got to be realistic. And sure, it would make sense that we could probably take half of that off. But that doesn't seem to me, that seems to me, we're asking for a situation to, um, from a union standpoint, but the world changed, you know, it isn't just now us. They have legitimate, uh, issues that they can bring forward to us that we have to address. And if we don't address those, then we've got other issues that keeps compounding and snowballing. So is this really the best option for us to have?
Well, what my question was of the temporary options, which one, I guess, would work the best for you? I know it's not ideal in any situation, but is there one more than another that makes sense to you for what you mean?
I don't know, I wouldn't have, I don't, I don't know if I have an opinion. Or if I do, I don't know if I'd want to say it.
Sure.
Because that's, I'm kind of your guys' decision, I mean, I, I, I've probably spoken them with John, you know? And I think John is, is verbalized, you know, what, what he's presented to me. And, and I, and, you know, and I thi- I think the big thing with any of the portable, whether you go with the house or whether you go with the tube, the metal tube thing. I mean, when we was talking with Jake, you know, I mean, you need, you need me out, like, in three weeks. I mean, Jake is telling us that even to get communications into that tube, it's going to be four months.
Well, that's my thing is the timing of it, so that's kind of why I'm looking at, why don't we find out what somebody can do if they can do the architectural part of it? And how fast they, because they can put those things up fairly quickly usually.
John? I'd be shocked that we could have the add-on done within a year. I mean, maybe this year we could, yes. But I, but there's still, I'm going to back up and say there is another option that the two of us have talked about. We have a place for the receptionist, we need a place for Terry. Whether he could house temporarily somewhere else, maybe Lennox. And I talked to a couple of you about that. Maybe, maybe house from his, his home office. It's doable, it would buy us time, it would save us money. Um, but that, that is another very quick option.
Madam Chair, um, if I heard you correctly, you were talking about the filing cabinets out there. Um. Are you suggesting that if we would like scan all those documents, we free up a bunch of space?
Well, I think that's one issue and I don't know what his requirements are for keeping what he has, but I don't know if that's something that the registrar did or equalization, if they have the ability to, the equipment to scan those things in, as opposed to hiring somebody outside to do it?
I think some of the larger stuff I think we need to send out, I don't, I don't know if they have that.
Okay.
I don't know. I would, maybe, maybe R O D does, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that either, um.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, Madam Chair, I mean, we've got a lot of space in this county that we could put some filing cabinets with some, uh, old bridge drawings in in order to make room for our highway superintendent, I would think we could figure that out and make that happen, and so I'm kind of partial to either the glass, uh, dividers, uh, you know, the temporary wall, I don't know if I'm so enthused about that, but I think you could probably have a pretty nice professional office space using those glass dividers out there, they've got the same thing up in the planning and zoning office, and I've been at plenty of meetings up there and it seems to work pretty good.
John, what was the electrical again on the government housing?
So assuming that I put it to the east side of the highway shop, it's about thirty-eight hundred dollars, I think.
Thirty-eight hundred.
Thirty-five hundred dollars.
East side?
Five thousand and a nine thousand.
I, we could, we, it costs us probably two thousand dollars to put it, uh, one to two thousand dollars to put it on the west side. But that would be, depending on where you put it, would probably be in the way of any future build. So if we put it on the east side, where it would be out of the way, and then, and there's probably other options, but it's, it's a little difficult because anything that's, uh, on that west side of the building has got like the water tanks for the fire suppression and all that. So there's just a lot going on on that west side to just pop it anywhere, so that's why I would, I kind of went to that east side and that was about thirty-five hundred dollars estimate. You know, just a very quick estimate from electrician.
Bill, is there, do we have any wiggle room at all? Or do we need this office space for the added judge and the expansion within that state's attorney's office? Is that something that we need yesterday? Or do we need it in June?
What are the thoughts about Terry being able to work at home until we figure out a long-term solution?
Madam Chair, I, I think it's always important for leadership to be seen in the office and be around the men and women they lead and proximity in government usually is respected and appreciated, so I think it'd probably be uh, not only in Terry's best interest, but the county and the employee's best interest for him to be able to have a relationship with his folks out there and I think we should just move these, uh, get these filing cabinets out of the way. Yeah, there would be a little reduction in the training space for a short term, but, you know, the county won't go off the rails. Everybody will be safe, we can still do training to standard out there. And let's just get a temporary solution in place and I'd say go with the glass retaining walls, get the, get the filing cabinets out of there. Yeah, it reduces training space for a while, but it's not going to harm anybody.
Can you, is there room to use, uh, one of the bays for training? If you had the technology set up for it, if you need technology for those meetings?
I think a lot of the training they do, uh, they do on the TV we have in there.
So could we, is there a way we could have a TV out in the main, like maybe your first bay to use it for training?
You'd want to build around it, I mean, so it's not sitting out in the elements of the shop.
Right, like, so you could get one of those outdoor boxes and put around the TV. They sell them at Best Buy, I don't know how much they cost, but-
Could the training be done here, in this building?
I don't know that you have room.
We don't have any room.
No, but you've got three in one room downstairs, you've got that multi-purpose room. Could that be utilized for training purposes?
I mean, it could, I mean, then-
I mean, you don't train, you don't train every day. I mean, you, you schedule these things at, at certain times. So if that room isn't utilized, it's sitting vacant right now. So why can't you have those people rather than there, come down here and go through their training? Which would take away some of the usage that is required in that, in that break room.
At minimum, they do a weekly safety meeting, typically Monday mornings.
Okay.
Um, just the, I would think just the effort to get all those guys here with different pickups and everything would be a little difficult, plus it would occupy a lot of parking over here for that hour or whatever, it would, it just, I don't think that's effective.
Well, and they're probably getting started bright and early in the morning before the courthouse is even open. I'm just, would that be an option to put a TV if it was enclosed out in the first bay for training?
So, so if you're going to take half their break room, are they going to be taking breaks and everything out in the shop then, as well?
I don't know, I mean, are they coming back to the shop for breaks and for lunch? When they're out in the field?
So, so my big thing, I guess, um, so this is me fighting for my guys, is I don't think it's equitable to them to force them to sit out in the shop in the middle of summer, when they've been working out on the road all day and they want to come back, they got to fill out, you, usually, usually in the summer they take their afternoon break is in the shop.
And how many of them, how many of them are usually on break at one time?
Well, they all go at the same time.
They do, okay.
Yeah, so, so for them to come back and be sitting around in the, the hot enclosed shop, you know, if it's ninety degrees outside, it's probably a hundred and ten degrees in the shop. You know, and then, I mean, I don't think that's fair to them to force them to sit out there and you know, take their break and eat their lunch or whatever if they're there, I mean, to me, it's, but-
Terry, again, how many individuals in the highway shop, fourteen, I have fourteen stuck on my head.
Fully staffed, we're at sixteen.
Sixteen. John, is there any way to get sixteen at a table on half of that space? Granted, not the, uh, TV for training, but could they, could we configure a table situation still in there where we could get sixteen people in there out of the-
I'd have to look, but I think it'd be challenging.
Look, everyone, we, we realize that we've got an unfavorable situation, but we have to do something. Uh, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Erns that we put up the temporary walls in the break room. Make as much accommodations for as many people to take a break on the other side, um, and then equip the first bay or whatever bay that would work with the television for their training purposes. This is a temporary situation, I totally, fully support during the research to find out what the addition's going to be. But we have to make a decision and we have, none of it's fun, uh, by any means, uh, but we have to come up with a immediate uh, decision that's going to be, uh, enacted that we can get something done, so I, I, depending on what the public has to say, I'm, I'm ready to offer a motion.
I would take public input on this item. Anything you want to add, John?
Can I ask a stupid, I want to ask a dumb question, everybody's talked. How often is that room downstairs, that multi-purpose room utilized during a week? Is it full every day, is it full all the time? Does it get used once a week, uh, twice a week, once a month, I'd like to know.
I, I couldn't give you an exact number, but I'll tell you there's times that multiple place people want to use it. It seems like it's either at very high demand and two or three different departments would want to use it, or sometimes it sits empty for a day or two. And then we throw in the fact that it's heavily used by the judicial department for jury selection and that stuff. And there's talk of that also being an overflow courtroom potentially somewhere down the road.
Yeah, I think, let's just face it, things are going to be tight around here for a while, this is government, not private industry where they can build out with unlimited budgets. We're just going to have to play musical chairs for a while and everything will be fine, we'll get along, it'll be uncomfortable, but it won't be unsafe. So I think we can make do and people appreciate the fact that, you know, that people are making some concessions with regard to spending money for the budget and the employees are making some concessions with not having a hundred and ten percent of what they'd like to do and nobody ever gets to run the table and have it all their way, so I, I think till a new courthouse gets built here, um, everybody will make do and we can make this work.
All right, uh, does anyone want to make a motion on this?
Was there public input on this?
Um, I did ask for public input.
Okay, she did.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I would offer a motion to authorize, uh, John Rambo to move forward with creating two temporary office spaces in the current, uh, break room, authorizing him up to thirty thousand dollars to accommodate uh, that as well as accommodating, uh, a media station in the, uh, shop for training purposes and creating as much seating capacity for, uh, the individuals on the remainder break site so that they can, uh, take their breaks as many as possible in, in the remainder site, up to thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussions? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landy?
No. The motion does carry.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And, John, will you check on those other options, the long-term?
Yes, I will.
Effects and get some more information on that?
Yes, I will.
All right, thank you. Would you have time to bring that to our next meeting?
Yes, I'll, I'll tie down some answers for two weeks.
Okay, thank you. All right, move on to item nine on our agenda, board action to appoint members to boards and committees.
Yes, uh, Carter, would you mind bringing up the briefing form for regular business item number nine, please? There's a table on there I'd like to refer to.
Do you know what page that is of our package, Sean?
Page thirty.
Thank you.
Yep. So in, um, the first meeting of twenty twenty-two, the motion was to keep it the same. And so these, uh, appointments have been the same for twenty-one and twenty-two. Um, for the bylaws of, uh, the Southeastern Council of Governments, Toby and Terry would be the, um, board alternates for the Urbanized Development Board. Um, and Emergency Management Service Coordinators, Harold Timmer, Tim, Timmerman. Um, the biggest one I have questions about was the, uh, City of Sioux Falls Solid Waste Planning Board. Um, we had John Hanson in there and, and, uh, last year we just chose not to appoint anybody in there, but then that board came back to us asking for our approval since we were part of the five county landfill. But otherwise, um, how do you want to proceed for twenty twenty-three?
Is there anybody that wants any changes made to their appointments, one way or the other? Want on or want off?
Madam Chair, I have a question though for ourselves. Is there any desire from our, uh, department heads to have a liaison? Serve kind of as a, a sounding board individually? Um, by chance, I know that some of our counterparts, uh, do appoint commissioners uh, to different departments so they, they can maybe have a more one-on-one, just a question, thank you.
No, I, I've had that same discussion and, um, I know our neighbors to the north do that where there is a liaison member of the board, uh, with the various department heads. Um, is there a thought to doing that?
We at one time had that. But it was, uh, marginal, I mean, there was meetings that were held and uh, discussion and it soon kind of just evaporated into a, into a non-functioning activity, so.
Kind of no need to meet if there's no issues, correct?
Yeah, there was no need to meet, uh, did you, we're burning issues and no one really had any or no one brought one up, so if there wasn't any reason to meet.
Well, why don't we move forward with the ones that we have in front of us and then we can talk about that further?
Madam Chair, unless, if the public comment, but if there's not-
I'm going to ask for a public comment first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there public comment on this agenda item regarding the board and committee position appointments? If not, then Poppins, you can go ahead with your motion.
Maybe there's a flush something out, but I'll, I'll move to, uh, leave the appointments the same, thank you.
Second, Pat.
All right, I got a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. All right, item ten, our legal newspapers.
Yes, so last year, uh, first meeting of the year, legal newspapers were T, were appointed as T Weekly, Lennox Independent, Sioux Valley News, and Argus Leader. And part of the motion was to continue to pub, publish, send public, publishing requests to the Beersford Republic, and then I was asked to come up with kind of a report of publication errors. So on the, um, facts and vetting of the next briefing form, uh, you will see- next briefing form, uh, you will see that table that I made. Uh, Carter, if you wouldn't mind bringing up number tens, thank you very much. Um, and then per the rules, we do need to have three. So, if it's gonna be different, we can't have any less than three.
I'm surprised to see the Beersford Republic didn't rank at the very top there. You know, I put a phone call into those people several times, never got a phone call back. So, I don't know what's going on, but, uh, it looks like these errors are not just restricted to one particular newspaper. It kinda looks like it's across the board and like any endeavor, it's a human, it's a human endeavor and people make mistakes and we just gotta work with it, do the best we can.
The only caveat I'd like to see for some of our local papers would be that they would put, um, the business items that we conduct on kind of a reporting basis. I know the Lennox Independent, put it on the front page, uh, for the past couple of times, which is nice to inform the public because if they only read the minutes, minutes or don't really say anything, they have no, uh, other than who made a motion and who didn't. But a lot of times the discussion is what the public would like to see, and I'd like to see our papers do that. And I know that they will tell you they don't have a reporter, but yet, uh, they are able to view, uh, online and they are able to review so that they're a weekly publication, so they should be able to put some kind of article in the paper about what the commission did decide and how they came to a, a conclusion. But I would move that, uh, we keep, uh, our local papers as they are and, uh, they are, they are our official publications. That would be my motion, Madam Chair.
You wanna keep all five?
Yes.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Got a motion and a second. I would like public comment on this agenda item, um, if there is any.
Uh-oh.
Or other comment from our department heads.
Not public comment, but, um, what I would recommend is we narrow this down to three, but continue to publish with all of them as we have in the past to prevent our errors. Um, so we only have three that we legally have to publish in, but we send it to all of them still. So, they won't be missing out on their revenue, but then we don't have to worry about some of the errors.
Okay.
Cause it's more costly when we have to republish with all of them.
Right, and, and I guess I, I would agree with that. So, I mean, are you suggesting we use T Lennox and Argus? Because those are the three that we had the least errors with?
I would for sure keep Argus in there, um, but the, I would let the table speak for itself.
Lennox and Canton, Lennox and Sioux Valley, Lennox Independent and Sioux Valley News.
Well, yeah, Madam Chair, I see the, I subscribe to all these except for Beersford, cause they won't call me back footstomp, if you're listening, Beersford Republic, and, um, T and Lennox and Sioux Valley News, they're always writing. You know, I'm not saying they have to. They're a newspaper where the government, they, we can't force them to do anything, but they always have a write-up to the citizens about what we're doing and, you know, and I don't know about the Beersford, cause I don't see it, but the Argus Leader, they could, uh, they're a sinking ship as far as I can tell, but, uh, um.
So, which three do we wanna use then?
Frankly, I'd go with your local hometown newspaper instead of the, uh, big corporate conglomerate owned by somebody out of state, which is the Argus.
Sean, what did we do last year?
All five of them.
Uh, we did Argus, Lennox, Sioux Valley News and T. And if you are wanting to know like ownership information, I've attached the statements of legal newspaper ownership and circulation, which is required to be sent to the Secretary of State, um, for each of these five entities.
Yeah, I wanna keep the Argus just simply because I think that is.
Madam Chair.
That's who, that's my district.
I'd like to see, we continue what we did last year, I guess.
Go ahead, Poppins.
Yes, I have a dis, a disagreement, uh, with this. Uh, not to say I don't find their logic in it, but then how many other publications could come up and say, hey, we want the revenue? Or people are looking at their magazine thinking it's a legal newspaper and relying on it. If we make a decision to only reward those individuals, uh, or magazine, or newspapers to the three that we're required to, I think then we stick to the three and not advertise in others, because who knows, who else may say they have a publication and deserve to have the revenue. Nor, or a, a resident in one of them that we choose not to make it a legal, legal paper and they're relying on, there's an error and then we run into cir, circumstance where a, a constituent or a, a member of our community is, is not getting the information accurately. So, although there's great logic in still advertising in those papers that, that don't meet the standard, I just can't support that.
Commissioner Poppins, a magazine does not constitute a legal newspaper.
And when I say magazines, I'm referring to anybody that will qualify themselves.
Hello.
Newspaper.
If it ain't broke, why fix it? Say, Madam Chair, if it isn't broke, why fix it? I can understand what our auditor has said, but we have done this and this seems to work weathered well. Rather than pick and choose, uh, you've got people, you're trying to educate and inform the public, and if we make them all our legal newspapers, I don't have an issue with that. But we have a motion on the floor, right?
We have a motion on the floor, so why don't we vote on that? Go ahead, Sean.
Question is what now, Madam Chair?
Well, the motion is to keep all five as legal.
Thank you.
Despite our auditor's request for us to do something different. Sean, will you call the question?
Was there public input on this?
Uh, I believe I did, but maybe not. Is there public input on this? Please, don't all come up at once. Okay, uh, go ahead, Sean.
Commissioner Erns?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
No. Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to pick three of these with the understanding that we would still publish in all five?
Yeah, uh, Madam Chair, you know, that's probably the, uh, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. That's probably the, the best resolution here and, um.
It's gonna save us money, is what I think our auditor's saying.
It's gonna save the county money. It's gonna save the county staff from having to redo all the things, but more importantly, it's the business of government that gets held up. And so the people who are the, if you wanna call them a victim or they suffer a detriment is they can't get their hearing at the time when it's supposed to take place when the newspaper messes up. And, you know, I don't know if the newspapers have been apologetic or apologize or call these people and express any sympathy. I highly doubt it, but they should. And so we shouldn't show any sympathy either to these newspapers and we similarly probably shouldn't show any kind of loyalty or allegiance to them if they're not gonna call our citizens and apologize for their mistakes either. And so that's, you know, fundamentally, we all know the newspaper lobby is the one who wants this law in place cause they want the revenue. It's all about money. They wanna take money from citizens and they wanna put it in their own pockets. That's what it always is. Unfortunately, we're not the legislature. We don't get to change the law. So, I'd agree. I think the resolution here is, I'll make a motion that, um, basically, we take the three newspapers with the least number of errors and we make those the, uh, we make those the newspapers of record, cause otherwise I'd look like a darn hypocrite if I said something else.
Okay.
So, I can't get everything I want either, Madam Chair.
Okay, so, Argus Leader, Beersford Republic and Lennox Independent.
That's right.
Okay, is that your motion then?
It is.
Okay, is there a second?
And my feelings won't be hurt if I don't get a second.
I'll second for discussion.
Beersford Republic. I'm sorry.
Well, at the beginning of the year there, Commissioner Schmidt, we thought the Beersford Republic was, uh, you know.
Do we ever look at the publication numbers? Would we ever, if we, if we wanna get down to something besides the error factor or whatever, we heard all this, uh, air, do we ever look at the circulation? Numbers that go out, do we ever look at the territory that they cover? And we live in an edge when we're trying to educate and bring as much information to the public as possible and for the few dollars that it costs, and I know it's a budget item and I know it probably is an exorbitant amount in some people's minds, but not mine, I think it's incumbent that we use any and all means to educate the public on what we do, how we do it and why we do it.
Aren't we accomplishing that if we're still using all five for our publications, but when they mess up, we don't have to pay the cost or, uh, inherit the delay that had nothing to do with us?
Back to what our auditor said, I have no problem with that as long, and, and, and seriously, your local newspapers without that revenue that they get from the, uh, from the information that the county provides, they would disappear. I mean, that's fact to all over the state. You look at the number of printed newspapers that are do, down. They, they decline every year. Every year, there's an article in the state legislatures that wanted to digitize all of that and make that legal. Your newspaper association always comes out against that. A local paper is the lifeblood of your community along with your schools.
You're correct, Commissioner Schmidt. So, if I'm understanding you correctly, you are in support of this motion.
What motion?
The motion that's on the floor.
Oh, you mean to use, use the lowest three?
Correct.
Absolutely not.
Even though we would continue to publish in the other.
I'm so glad I second this motion.
You know, Commissioner Schmidt.
Lowest readership that you could possibly have.
Commissioner Schmidt, the internet wasn't created yesterday. The internet has the highest publication rate, not these newspapers.
Thank you, Commissioner Erns, I'm well aware of that. You can save that rhetoric.
And frankly, if the county government is responsible for propping up these newspapers and the citizens, the property taxpayers of Lincoln County are the only thing that stands between the newspaper going out of business, we got problems.
Is this any indication of how the rest of the year is gonna go?
Commissioner Erns, if you look at the number of people that rely on their local newspaper for more than many different things, and if we're able to substantiate that in equality of life and still educate the public, I think that's money well invested.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Go ahead.
Canton is the county seat and I do think it's kind of an insult if you're not gonna make the county newspaper from the location of where our county seat is.
Yes.
And that's the Sioux Valley News?
To me, has to be.
Sioux Valley News, right?
Pardon?
That's the Sioux Valley News.
Yes.
So, they have the highest number of errors. Do you think they should be a, they should get a, an award for that?
I didn't, I didn't say they're supposed to get an award for that. I'm saying that this is the county seat and this should be a newspaper that represents this county.
Do you wanna, have we got a sec, uh, Commissioner?
Yeah, we've got a motion.
Why don't we call, call the motion on this thing?
Yeah.
I don't know what our motion is anymore.
I'm calling it.
Take, uh, the Beersford Republic and the Argus Leader and the Lennox Independent, correct?
And was, did that motion include that we would continue to publish in the other two as well?
Yeah.
It does.
Okay.
Go ahead and call the question.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Madam Chair, to follow the rules, I would move that we use the T Weekly, Lennox Independent and this, uh, Sioux Valley News as our legal newspaper, keeping the Beersford Republic and the Argus Leader as alternates.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Sean, will you call the roll?
Public.
Public comment.
Public comment.
Public comment.
We asked for, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we'll keep asking.
Gotcha.
I guess. All right, now will you call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes, motion carries. All right.
Bill's going, oh, it's gonna be a long year.
That's what I'm thinking too. All right.
So, this item number ten, um, is just an opportunity that I recognized to streamline, uh, this current status quo for the coroner.
Are you tagging, you're tagging eleven, correct?
Is it eleven?
Yeah, eleven. The coroner?
Yeah, let's not go back to item number ten.
Yeah, agreed.
Item number eleven, uh, status quo is we appoint this position, this coroner position every two years due to a lack of interest, interest, interested candidates at the general elections. Uh, it's my understanding that this has been the case since there hasn't been a salary for this position. And the proposed change is to make this an appointed position, which we are allowed to do by law, um, that serves at the pleasure of the board. And if, any, anytime in the future, the board wants to put this back to an elected position, they can do so. And that resolution would, uh, simply state a resolution by Lincoln County, South Dakota, adopting the appointment option for county coroner. Be it resolved that Lincoln County, South Dakota hereby adopts the appointment option for county coroner. Be it further resolved that Kenneth Snell is hereby appointed as Lincoln County coroner according to S D C L seven seven one point four.
All right, any questions about that?
Actually, I do, Madam Chair.
All right, go ahead.
Now, Madam Chair, I was just gonna say, um, I've visited a number of times with Dr. Snell. He's highly qualified, highly respected. He also serves as a coroner in Minnehaha County. Just so the public knows, uh, the, I've, I've known regular laypersons who serve as the coroner in other counties and, uh, really, they serve no real, um, they serve a ministerial function, if you will, when somebody passes away, but at the end of the day, the coroner ends up having to be a doctor because you can't find any interest in it, so, um, he, he's done the best he can for Lincoln County. I think he continues to do the best. He doesn't need to be paid, cause he's a, uh, employee of Sanford Hospital and, and also receives money for the autopsies that get performed by, uh, by our county in Minnehaha County and we share those responsibilities. And he's done his best to cut costs as well, working with the other hospitals. Uh, there, there's one hospital system in particular that, uh, wants to continue to do autopsies even when they're not medically necessary and Dr. Snell has worked to try to push back on them in order to save taxpayer money. So, I, I would consider to support Dr. Snell until somebody wants to run for the job.
And this is, uh, my understanding of what's on the floor before us is just to change the, the format, whether it be electoral or an appointment. So, you're supporting an appointment?
Well, I support, uh, my motion is to appoint him. We can't make any changes to the state law. I mean, right?
But we're, this isn't changed, the state law allows us to do this.
Yeah.
One or the other.
Yeah, and all we're doing is appointing him.
Making it an appointed position instead of an elected.
Well, I mean, if somebody wants to run, they can come along and we can consider it at that time.
Madam Chair.
Does that make sense, Sean?
Is the, is that your motion?
No, my, my, my motion is to appoint Dr. Snell to the position. My motion is not to change the process by which we do it.
But we actually have to change the process.
But we can appoint if we haven't changed the process.
We have to change the process.
Well, maybe it's, maybe it's a difference without a distinction then. I, I, all I'm suggesting is we appoint him to the position cause it's vacant right now and nobody ran for it, right?
Nobody ran for it, that is correct.
Yes, so we can just appoint him and like we usually do.
All right, I've got a motion. Is there a second?
Okay. I'll, no, I'm holding for a second. I have a question to the public.
All right, go ahead.
Since we haven't had the public comment.
I know, go ahead.
Uh, we have two representatives from political parties, um, because the, the impact that I would see maybe on this is their ability to vote in their, um, committee assignments and stuff like that within their parties. Um, I don't know if they have any comment on that, because if it goes from an elected to an appointed position, there is a change potentially in, um, their party makeup. So, if, if it's unclear, I can clarify it, but I think Mrs. Otten might know what I'm talking about.
Is it a partisan?
Well, yeah, as an elected, it's a partisan.
Is it partisan?
It is.
I don't.
Yes.
It is.
Coroner is?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a county and above, so it's non-municipal, so it's partisan.
The question, Mrs. Otten, that I actually was hopefully addressing to you and, uh, Mr. Skiles because of your affiliation with the party, if we go to a appointed position, does that lose voting rights for that individual within the party's, uh, hierarchy?
If either of you wants to speak to that, come on.
Don't have to either way. Don't have to either way.
Chad Skiles, thank you for the question. Um, I'm going to look at it more probably, um, with my career medical background, which is, um, we have a good thing going for us with Dr. Snell versus someone being elected who has no background, no medical knowledge, which does happen, and happens across the state. I don't see it as being a, a political thing, even though historically it has been an elected position. I look at it more along the lines of what's, what do we do that's going to be best, so that something doesn't get missed, um, for the citizens of a county. Is that answered?
Yes, I agree with you, but I wanted your comment. Thank you.
Right, so nobody ran, so the seat is vacant. So I think we can appoint specifically Dr. Snell today, so...
But the question was, is do we go to an appointed?
But is this going forward, or?
I think the intent here was to go forward, but I don't think there's a consensus to do that yet today.
Okay, because in the Lincoln County bylaw, or in the state bylaws for Republicans, he is considered an elected official who can vote at our, um, uh, meeting, like Thursday night.
Sure.
Correct.
If he's a citizen of Lincoln County, but he's not, you don't know.
He is. He, he does live in Lincoln, you have to be an elected official, and one of them is the coroner, if you live in Lincoln County and you are a registered Republican. That is correct.
So, is he a registered Republican?
He is.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
I think what's in front of us, Madam Chair, is to, is to adopt an appointment option versus actually appointing.
Right, but I don't think we need to do that today, so, but we do need a coroner.
Yep. And that's what my motion is, just simply to appoint him to the position. It's not to reform the position process.
We can talk about that more in the future.
I will support Commissioner Aaron's motion to appoint the current, current auditor, our current coroner, excuse me.
All right, so I've got a motion, I've got a second. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppen's?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. All right, move on to item 12 on our agenda.
Sorry, Madam Chair.
What, do you have something to say?
It rarely happens. I know you're surprised. It's actually a two-part topic on our agenda. One topic being making an appointment position. If we choose to ignore, we just need to address...
Right, let's table it. How about if we table that?
That's fine. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would move to table.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we, oh, public input on that. All right, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppen's?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Sorry, thank you for that catch.
Sorry.
Nope, you're fine. Uh, all right, additional staff.
So I'm requesting, um, creation of new position in the auditor's office, and to direct human resources to recruit for the position. Um, the position's going to be an accounting technician at grade 104, to be hired between $20.34 and $22.44 per hour.
All right, anybody have any questions for our auditor?
I don't have any questions, Madam Chair. I'll, I'll just say, I know why the position's being created. Everyone on the board does. I support the reasons for it, but because I've got concerns about FTEs, what I would have rather have seen is that one position be moved from another office in order to fund or subsidize this one, to pay for this one. So I'm, I'm not opposed to the efforts that this is going to result in, fully supportive of it. I know the auditor's office is going to do a good job, but because of the FTE issue, I'm, I'm not going to support it.
Yeah, I will take public input on this, and additional comments from commissioners. Any public input on this agenda item?
I, I, I hear what Commissioner Aaron's is saying, and I can't say that I disagree. I think this is the first step, and then we need to look at perhaps reducing staff in another office to offset this FTE. So I'm going to support this today, but, um, I've got concerns about the number of employees in, um, in another office.
So is that an agenda item you want to have in the future?
I believe it should be, yes.
Okay, we can talk.
We can talk more about that perhaps in executive session, but, um, I'm going to support this.
Is there a sunset on this position, or it just would be?
No. Not, there's no sunset on this position.
Commissioner Gibbon, there's never a sunset on anything in government.
Well, that's not true.
There's always, well, especially not on newspapers.
All right, so I have a motion.
Very well put. You do?
Do, that's what I'm wondering. Do I have a motion?
I would offer your motion to authorize, authorize the auditor's office to add this FTE.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, public input on this item? All right, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppen's?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Uh, we will move on to our opportunity for public comment. Anybody in the audience want to come up and speak to anything not on the agenda? All right, I don't see anybody. Any commissioner reports?
Madam Chair, uh, on a much more serious front, um, I do want to let the public know that, uh, Mike McMahon, who was the city planner for the city of Harrisburg, did pass away last week. It was sudden, it was unexpected. It's a shock to the Harrisburg community. Uh, Mike was always a very conscientious, uh, public employee. He had seen the city of Harrisburg through tremendous growth that's happened in the last few years. He was a valuable member of the city team, and, uh, he will be missed. And so I would just ask the public and others to keep Mike's, uh, family in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Aaron's. I know I've always enjoyed my conversations with him on the UDC board.
Madam Chair, my public comment would be, as an Augie grad, I want to recognize and commend the members of the SDSU football team for winning a national championship. Quite an feat, and congratulations to all those involved, and families.
That was...
My public comment would be, I'd like to publicly express to our highway department their extra hard work and long hours in clearing the roads and taking care of the highways and putting them in a condition for people to travel, and to our first responders that were called upon to rescue anybody that was stranded in this last snowstorm. I think we're very fortunate to have that group of people willing to dedicate themselves.
Thank you. Any other reports? All right. If not, we've got several executive session items. We are anticipating taking action on a few of those, so I would ask for a motion to go into executive session at this time.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd move that we go into executive session under SDCL 1-25-sub-2, uh, 1, 3, and is it also necessary to go under 4? Well, whether or not we do, I'll make that the motion.
Okay, I've got a motion to go into executive sessions under all, under all of the available subsections. Um, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppen's?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
All commissioners, there are roles I bought for your participation. If you want to take one before we go into our...
Do we have the streaming going? All right. I left my agenda in the other room, but we do have agenda items that we need to, um, either take action on or not. So just looking, we have item one on our executive session agenda, um, with a contract with Tegra. So I'm just, uh, asking for a motion on that.
So moved, Madam Chair, to engage the contract with Tegra for our new courtroom facilities.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any public input? If not, um, Sean, will you call the roll?
I will.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppen's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. All right. And then skipping down, um, to item five, I don't think that was, I don't think that, we're not taking action on that one. We don't have a contract yet to take action on. Um, item six, we're ready to take action on that.
Yes, Your Honor, they had sent that, or, they'd sent that to me for a signature from the attorney through DocuSign, and I'd like authorization to sign it, to engage them to, um, negotiate the terms with Henry Carlson.
All right, we've heard the request. Is there any public input on this item? All right, if not, I'd consider a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, if not, uh, Sherry, will you call the roll? Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppen's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine? Yes. So that takes care of items one, five, and six on our agenda for the time being. We're not going to take any action on item four, as I understand it. And then, um, we're going to move forward with, uh, going back into executive session on items two and three. So can I get a motion to go back into executive session?
So moved on subsections one, two, and four.
Second.
Thank you. Um, will you call the roll, please? Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppen's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Yes.
Madam Chair, moved to come out of executive session.
I've got a motion to come out of executive session. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppen's?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Um, Bill, we are going to take action on item two, the sick leave assistance program application. Um, do you want to come up, Tracy, and just in general terms, explain that, so we can take action on that?
Yeah, I have an employee who's wanting, uh, has requested to use some sick bank pay that is, um, they have not yet met their criteria for the longevity of they've been here, but they meet the criteria otherwise, and so I'm asking for, um, a certain amount of hours that they've requested.
All right. Any public input on this agenda item? If not, is there a motion?
Also moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Motion is to approve.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppen's?
Yes.